This is Tuesday, January, I'm sorry, February 7th, 2023. And this is the City of Iowa City Council meeting. And I'm going to say roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right, I want to welcome everyone to your city hall. And to anyone online, welcome as well. We're going to start out with Proclamations, which is two, Agenda Item Number Two, Two A. All right. Whereas 1976, February has been designated as a month to celebrate the rich legacy of Black Americans and their many contributions to this country. And whereas the City Council of Iowa City has identified the advancement of racial equity, social justice, and human rights as one of the pillars of the city's strategic plan. And whereas the council is committed to improving racial equity within city government and throughout our city as a whole. And whereas more remains to be done, this commitment is currently being demonstrated through efforts such as the Racial Equity and Social Justice Grant Program, the use of racial equity toolkits, the racial diversification of the city's workforce, and the establishment of the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And whereas this commitment extends to celebrating the important roles that African-American leaders, educators, and social justice pioneers, such as Archibald A. Alexander, Elizabeth Catlett, Philip G. Hubbard, Helen Lemming, Elizabeth Tate, and James Alec McPherson, have played in the Iowa City's history and culture. And whereas Black history is important in its own right, but we, Iowa Cityans, who are not Black, have an opportunity to recognize that Black history is a part of our history and thereby to help us co-imagine and co-construct a future that will be good for all of us. And whereas the city departments have planned a variety of activities and programs to acknowledge Black History Month, including the Senior Center, Climate Action and Outreach, Equity and Human Rights, and the library. More details on the programs can be found by visiting the city's website. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 to be Black History Month. And we are excited to have quite a few community members here to accept this proclamation. And we will have Commissioner Roger Lucella from the Humans Right Commission, Ismail from the Sudanese Commission, I believe the last name is pronounced Alnaun, Anmi Kish, who is the Chair of the African Community Network, Jean Marie Adiam, Chairperson of the Congolese Community, and Monique Washington, who is a community member, and our dear Mrs. Marion Coleman of Black Voices, and that order. And I'm going to come and give you all a proclamation at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Bruce, and thank you, Council. My name is Roger Lucella. I'm the Chair of the Human Right Commission. I'm here with my fellow Commissioner, Jeanne V., she's back there, and Bijou Maliabo as well. We are the Human Right Commissioner, and we have the whole Black and African-American community here to accept this award. So I'm going to make a few remarks, then they all can come and say that. The Black and African-American in Iowa City is made up of many groups. We have the Native, the people that were born here, and we have some of the community pillar that are here, Mr. Townsend, and we have Marion Coleman, we have many people here. But we also have our immigrant community, that not only they come over here for a chance of a better life, like myself, but also contribute to this community that we call home. So I'm going to make my remarks as a representative of the Human Right Committee and Commission, then they can also make their remarks as well. Black and African-American history is American history. There is no disputing that. Black and African-Americans have made a measurable contribution, which have enriched this country, this county, and this city, indeed, the life of every American. Every American should acknowledge and be thankful for the contribution Black and African-Americans have made and continue to make. Every young Black and African-American should be proud because we are standing on the shoulders of the giants and history makers. We have many of them in the room here today. Through our history to the present, Black and African-Americans have experienced and endured injustice, iniquity, not just from societal and institutional biases, but also from other Americans we call friends, coworker, and neighbors. And even including the many deaths in the hands of police, the people who vowed to serve and protect us. It is more imperative that each of us, you and I, should learn and continue to learn about history of Black and African-Americans, not just the past history, but the present We have Black and African-American history makers among us today, the present one, our very own to term, Mayor Bruce Teague, who is a Black, openly gay man. We have our very own Rossane Porter, who made history last year as the first Black Chair of the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. We must shed light and condemn the injustice with Black Americans that continue experience today. I want to take also this moment to applaud the City of Iowa City and its commitment to extend and celebrate the important roles Black and African-Americans have played in our community with education, with social justice, and racial equity. Example of that is naming some of our school here. We have Alexander, we have Ellen Lemming, and we have Elizabeth Tate. I also want to applaud the city for recognizing social justice and racial equity in our strategic planning. And the commitment that the council have by allocating $100,000 for grants that the Human Right Commission does process to advance racial equity and social justice. Today, I call upon each of us, everybody in here, the community, to listen to our Black and African-American friends, coworker, and neighbors, and to learn about our experiences and to continue to fight on teaching our kids about the history of Black and African-Americans in the classroom. Until that becomes a reality, it is our responsibility to teach our children about our history on our dinner tables, to talk about the history of Black and African-Americans in our churches, in family gatherings, and to read about it in our book clubs. We all need to confront and end biases and take action to realize true reforms in our self- firsts, our community, our culture, our institution, and with humanity and love for one another, we can make our community a better place to live, work, and play. I thank those that came before us, that have worked so hard so some of us, African, Black African, we can come to this country and also live the American dream. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Maile Nour, I'm from Sudanese community. I'm here to accept this proclamation, and we thanks Iowa City and thank the mayor for invitation. Also, we recognize this month for Black History. And also, we thanks Iowa City for recognizing us and as communities here and supporting all the communities in the city. Also, we are very thankful for these moments to present our community, Sudanese community, as a part of this community and help make this community move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm the President or the Chair of the African Community Network. Thank you so much, City Council, for having me here. Unfortunately, I wasn't really prepared to come and give a speech because I was told last minute that this was going on. But I'm really grateful that you have a place where we can come and talk and talk about issues that affect us in our everyday life within Iowa City. So thank you very much, and I accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Marie. I'm the Chairperson of the Congolese Community of Iowa.
Welcome.
I'm here with two of my committee members, Inez and the Secretary, Patrick. First of all, we thank you for inviting the Congolese community. It looks for us as recognition of the community. Well, most of Congolese community are immigrants, really, so we have a lot of problem of integration. So that's why, due to the bad experience we have or we encounter in this country, so we are helping our community to live or to reach the dream that they have in living the country for coming to the America, really. Mostly, we have trouble about our youth. We register many, many losses due to reckless driving, the police, and something. So now we are planning to, we are conducting now a census, as you can see, we have a census for all Congolese community to know, really, the number of Congolese community, where they are in the city that they live here, so that we can, the community can extend its services to those who need and help all Congolese to overcome the issues that they have here. That's really our important role that we want to do. So we want to give everybody, I mean, from Congolese community to live or to have a better life here. That's how we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Monique Washington. It is a pleasure to stand here before you guys and recognize Black History Month. As you can see from the people that are here, we are a diverse community. Our history didn't start here. We have a rich history. It's painful, but it's rich and it's beautiful. And we need to have Black history taught in our schools and in our community. I think that's very important. And I feel that if you have somebody who has an act called the Stop Woke Act, to stop teaching Black history, I hope that this community never gets to that place. And so I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Marion Coleman, and I'd like to say thank you so much for recognizing Black history as you see it and you do see it. Also, it is a pleasure to know that our City Council is aware of the discrepancies in what happens in our schools. I was in the school district for 40 years, in the Iowa City Community School District. I was the Equity Director. I was a federal compliance officer. I am also the first African-American to ever retire from Iowa City Community School District in 100 years. So we have a lot of work to do. We have things that we need to address. We have to step up. We have to take action. I don't mean to sound like the civil rights worker I was growing up in the South, but it is a pleasure for me to live in Iowa City. I grew up in South Carolina, where the only thing we saw were Black and white people. But look around us tonight, we see people from everywhere. My kids and my grandchildren will be able to experience different cultures and will know that they aren't the lone stranger when it comes to working on ways that we can always get along, that we can all look at each other, lend a hand of support. I thank you very much for noticing that this is necessary. It speaks volumes. I am so happy to be here, and I am so happy to have lived in Iowa City for over 50 years. I went to school, a lot of different places, before coming here, but my real education started when I came here. Part of it was painful, growing up in South Carolina. I grew up when we were demonstrating, when we had the pairing plan so children could decide which school, kind of what they're trying to do in Iowa now. We did it in Carolina. But I grew up in Iowa. I learned to recognize all kinds of different people who needed things. I came here off of the Civil Rights Movement. And so I had the impression that, oh, who am I, because I'm Black? What's going to happen to me? And then I got the Equity job in the school district, and I found out, no, there are a lot of people who need support, special ed children, people from different cultures, children who don't speak English, English as a second language. I learned that I had to respect the genders of all people. I learned that I had to support them, defend them, encourage them, embrace them, and help them to feel welcome in this community. I had a hard time doing that, but because I am old as dirt and because I have been here for a very long time, I guess what County Champion told me once was that I had assimilated. I don't think I have assimilated. I think what I have done is grown up in Iowa City, recognizing all the wonderful people in our world. Thank you for this recognition.
Thank you. We're going to have Supervisor Porter give remarks.
Supervisor, County Supervisor Roy Sam Porter, just want to say thank you for this proclamation. Really look very proud to stand here to see our elderly who have stood before me, whose shoulders I have stood on, and I'm going to acknowledge them as well as Marion Coleman, it is Orville and Billy Townsend. Could y'all stand, please? Orville has been here since 1962, and they have put in the work in the community as well as Marion. But I stand here just to state that you all, as City Council, know what we went through. And today, it is Black history, and we were hurt from what we heard and what had happened. We have put that behind us, but we'll never forget it, and I want you to know that. We will never forget what you did to us because of the simple fact, we have stood up in this community with all of you on issues of any type of hate crime, any, whether it be in the Sudanese community, Congolese, the Jew, whatever it is, we have stood there, but when it happened to us, we didn't have that same support. And so just for us to recognize Black History Month this month, I do want to invite you all to come out. Black Voices is partnering with the City of Corvale to do a community soul food dinner in which Henry Harper started over probably 15 years ago. And so to continue that, what we do each year, we haven't done it, this will be the first year coming back after COVID, we will be at the Corvale Library February 17 at 5:30. It will begin at 5:30, and there is going to be a movie that's going to be shown, which is called The Soul Food Junkies. It's a documentary. So we invite the community, we invite Johnson County, Iowa City, Corvale, North Liberty. We want people to come out, and this is a way of fellowship, along with good eating. I also would like to talk to you in regards to Team Can, who has on their Facebook page, we are fundraising to continue to take our students of color, white students, Asians, it don't matter, but these kids will continue to go on the Civil Rights Tour and the HBCU Tour, in which we start out in Memphis, Tennessee. We take them to Slave Haven, going over to the Stax Museum, and then we go down to Samma, Alabama. They get off the bus, and they go across the bridge, they walk across the Admin Paddis Bridge. When they leave the Admin Paddis Bridge, we go into a museum in that park. When we leave there, we head down from Montgomery, Alabama, to Birmingham, Alabama. We do the 16th Street Church. We do everything from the Lynchon Museums all the way. It's a learning history, and it's not just for the children. A couple of years ago, we had Mayor Jim Throgmorton go, along with Rockne Cole, some members of City Council, and I would urge you to please consider going on this trip because it's a very learning, educational piece. So we are now fundraising for this. It is social and racial justice for us to continue to, our kids to get the education that they need, so that in order for them to know where they're going, they need to know where they come from. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out for the proclamation, and Council, if you all can just hold on one second. We have our first Sudanese American that was elected in the entire United States. Maza here, Salih, super happy that you're here. If you would like to have any words, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really have nothing to say, but I just like that you guys, including every Black community, like every Black in this community together, and you brought them together, and I'm sure they would be together all the time on this fight. And thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. And thanks to everyone that came for this proclamation. All right, we're going to move on to our Consent Agenda, which is Items Three through Eight. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Three through Eight?
I'll move, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
All right, anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Any topic that is within our Consent Agenda? Seeing no one in person or online? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to Item Number Nine, which is our community comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. And we will ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And there is a sticker in the back for people to place in the basket up here or on the sheet, or you can write your name. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay. I'm Judy Foal, President of the Tainakai Neighborhood, have been for over 30 years. First, I want to thank the city for the planned replacement of the old wooden structures at Kiwanis Park. Second, I want to thank the staff for the posting the transcripts last week of the November 30th Hybrid Meeting about the Southwest Rort Plan. Third, I want to thank the council members who reached out to me this week and provided information about the Abbey Lane sewer replacement project that had not been approved, that it had not been approved yet to go out for bid. Fourth, I was out of state this weekend when an Abbey Lane neighbor created a petition against narrowing the street after the larger sewer line is installed down the middle. I'd like to hand in the petition with the 20 addresses and names attached for the record. I don't know who to hand it to. Oops. Thank you. The city's council members will be getting an email with the same petition information on it, so you don't have to look at that. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Billy Townsend, and I have a concern that I thought I would, since this is Black History Month, I wanted to, and of course, my crazy phone is not doing what I wanted to do. But my concern is the things going on in Florida right now with diversity, with Ron DeSantis banning diversity and inclusion initiatives in the Florida universities. And I'm hoping that we can be woke and know what's going on in the country so that nothing happens like this in our Iowa City community. I think it's, from what he's saying, I'm going to read just a little bit of what DeSantis said Tuesday, that he intends to ban state universities from spending money on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in hopes that they will wither on the vine without funding. The reason I'm concerned is that here in Iowa City, at the University of Iowa, I understand they're looking at all the diversity programs, and I'm hoping that they aren't planning to take any initiatives to cut these programs. But I'd wanted to bring it to your attention so that we could understand what's going on in our country, especially during Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lori Benz. I'm a resident of Iowa City. I want to address the City Council tonight about the Senior Center's facility plans. As you know, the Senior Center is assessing building restoration options. I want to provide some historical context for the original decision-making to locate the Senior Center at its current site that you might not otherwise receive. In 1981, Betty Mizell and I helped to open the Senior Center after considerable input and planning by the City of Iowa City, Johnson County Board of Supervisors, and older community members. The location had been carefully studied and met two important goals of the city and the Council of Elders, a representative advisory group at that time. First, the center would serve as another key anchor venue in the downtown area, along with the Public Library, Robert A. Lee Recreation Center, and the Ped Mall. These sites were envisioned as destinations for residents that would promote greater interaction of diverse citizens, facilitate and increase use of the city-supported services and local businesses, and spur the overall vitality of the downtown area. The transportation services, including the Central Municipal Bus Exchange, the Seats Agency, and planned parking ramps, all were seen as supporting the Senior Center and downtown revitalization. Importantly, housing for older adults, such as Ecumenical Towers and Capitol House, was being built in the downtown area and still exists today to further support the involvement, well-being, and continued contributions of older well-being, and continued contributions of older folks to their community. The second goal of locating the senior center downtown, like the first, continues to be very relevant today. The location was intended to help keep older adults engaged in the larger community. Too often, they are segregated, isolated, and otherwise limited as full community participants. The visibility of active older adults in the downtown area challenges social stereotypes, and most importantly, contributes to the city's desired goals of inclusivity, citizen engagement, and a thriving community. Yes, the so-called Greatest Generation that Betty and I served is dwindling fast, and baby boomers are taking their place.
Thank you. Thank you. You have three minutes, sorry. Thank you. Yep.
I would like to submit my statement.
Yep, you can submit it there. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Would anyone else like to address any item that is not on the council agenda? Seeing no one in public, seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public comment period. Item number 10 is planning and zoning matters. 10A is West Benton Street and Orchard Street. Ordinance conditionally rezoned in approximately 3.52 acres of land located north of West Benton Street and west of Orchard Street from low-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay. And riverfront crossing or through Orchard to riverfront crossing Orchard. I'm going to open the public hearing. All right. So we're going to start with comments from our, I don't know if staff want to come up at all. Okay?
If you need to revisit anything from our presentation last meeting, we can do that. But otherwise, we were going to let you just continue the public hearing.
Great. I don't know if the applicant or the developer wants to say any comments at this time. Welcome.
Good evening, councilwoman. Thank you for the time. Brian Boff, Actuative Consultants, here representing the applicant and aptitude here as well, with a couple individuals who can speak and answering questions as well. Thank you for the time, both the planning zoning commission and council. I know you put in an additional time and work session this evening, as well as the city staff and the neighborhood who have been currently to be involved in our neighborhood meetings. Though I understand some of the questions and concerns, I think it is getting a little bit lost with everybody on what the issue is, though, in terms of rezoning, which, as you look at the items, is pretty straightforward and clear-cut in reality. This area is already approved as a riverfront crossings in the comp plan that the city council one-time approved. Also, the southern two buildings that are part of the three buildings in the concept are already rezoned at riverfront crossings. This is just a rezoning of it because of the CBA previously approved. So these items are already handled. In fact, on that southern two buildings, originally approved for 125 units, this proposal on the two southern buildings, only 100 units, with actually decrease in units from what we are showing in concept as part of the rezoning. Again, there were two similar side buildings there. We have industrial, everything else that meets that CBA from 2019. There are several items of concern that have continued to approach. And again, I believe they've all been addressed either by city code or by city policy and by city staff. The affordable housing that we're well aware of, again, will be met, whether it be fee-in-lue of or units within the building by city code, and they intend to do that and will have to do that. Traffic, we've already, I know if you're part of the work session, heard from Kent Rolston, Traffic Engineering, we have accepted all the additional requirements for the traffic signal and the turn lanes and the costs that go with that. It has been shown and proven through the study and by city staff and engineer, you know, that that will improve, that we can coordinate those communications and timings between those signals to make this flow well in Benton Street. Previously, not even tonight, but before, there were some concerns with parking, all that, which will be met by city code and needs to be met by city code with the site plan process. And then I know there's been some concern with transition in terms of building heights and density. Again, everything that is set forth in the riverfront crossings, which is under this comp plan, will be addressed. There is a three-story height requirement that they will be meeting, and as we decrease in height from the east to the west to the single-family residential. I would like to note, though, too, that if you go just another 400 feet to the west of our project, there's multi-story, multifamily buildings located there, also adjacent to the single-family residential, and will continue to be. So we've just struggled with the fact that we've met all these concerns. We've gone through a number of different evolutions of this project, from one large mass building originally with a different additional neighbors and parcels to three smaller buildings and a much smaller site, to try to get a product in here that still works and brings a great product to the city of Iowa City. So I appreciate your time, certainly happy to answer any questions, and I know aptitude and others are here to speak as well. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Zach Feldman. I work at the applicant aptitude development, Mayor Teague, city council members, and the people of Iowa City. We thank you for the opportunity to discuss our proposed rezoning and for the opportunity to potentially become a member of the community for many years to come. We presented in front of you a member of, a number of times previously, but I'd like to formally introduce our group. Aptitude Development is a nine-year-old company focusing on residential housing around the country. We take a unique approach to development by working with city staff, neighborhood groups, and undertaking extensive market research to create products that deliver a catered user experience to all of our residents. We never want to drop a box in the same place. Every location is different. We never go in thinking we know best. We approach each project from the point of what is the highest and best use, and how can we build something from nothing that is needed here? The project in front of you today underwent six-plus months of varying design and progression with 20-plus iterations based on feedback from city staff. As you know, city staff fully supports the proposed rezoning. The original building design has been cut in half, as Brian had mentioned, and the building has been separated into three detached structures that provide ample buffer from our neighbors to the west, integration of the public pedestrian path, solar elements, EV car-sharing programs, and public upgrades that benefit the neighborhood and all the buildings surrounding it. A few years ago, the city rezoned more than half of this site, setting a thoughtful framework for how future development in this neighborhood would progress. This project will fully comply with the parameters set by the city. As it stands today, a developer, whether it's us or someone else, could go build what is already zoned on approximately two-thirds of the site that is currently there. That zoning does not have density limits, and that is something that our project looks to account for in terms of proper planning. What we are proposing helps elevate and expand on the previous rezoning by providing proper parking counts, proper safety and ADA compliance, and creating a new addition to the community. This is something that we can all be proud of if it does go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Welcome.
Who are you? My name is Jared Hutter. I'm a founder, co-founder of Aptitude Development, and as Zach mentioned, we are a development firm based in New Jersey. We've been doing this around the country now for nine, 10 years. And, you know, as we get really involved in projects, we spend a lot of time in the local communities. So over the last, you know, six-plus months, I've spent a lot of time getting to know this area, and I really understand the affinity that everybody has for it. You know, after hearing in the work session earlier, talking to people around the city, hearing the comments from people, I get it why you guys love this area, right? Like, you know, this is, this is a very unique place, and we really appreciate the opportunity to hopefully become part of that community for many years to come. When we build projects, we really pour our heart and soul into it. It's not the same project everywhere. You know, Zach mentioned, we really design projects that fit the local area. And we try to take all the local concerns and think about them and incorporate them into our design and into our game planning. And the two biggest things that we've really heard from a pushback perspective over the last, you know, today, earlier in the work session and the previous meetings have really been about traffic and affordable housing. So, you know, just briefly speaking about those, you know, from a traffic, as was mentioned earlier by the city engineer, a traffic study was done for a smaller project, and a signal would already be put in place. I think the important thing to know here, though, is, you know, while adding housing stock here, certainly we'll add cars, let's think about who the end users of these units ultimately are. We are a student housing development company. So primarily, these will be students who are living, who are living here. They are not your nine-to-five type workers, you know, causing traffic during rush hour. It is much more off the beaten path from a time, from a trip perspective in terms of when they go. And I think that gets lost a lot of times when people just think about adding housing stock. So I just wanted to point that piece of it out. From an affordable housing standpoint, you know, there's a couple pieces. Number one is, the houses today, the, today that we're proposing to demolish and replace, they're all rented to students, right? It's not that we're displacing, we're proposing to displace anybody, you know, from an affordable unit. In fact, I would argue it's completely the opposite. By adding potentially 189 units to this area, you're almost doubling the housing stock in the area. Adding supply makes housing more affordable. There's no question about that. More supply, if demand is somewhat the same, will ultimately result in more affordable housing in the overall area. These, the demand for this and the ultimate market for these units, again, it's students, pulling them out of some of the other rental properties that are there and making them much more, those properties can then be sold at more affordable prices to everyone in the area. Again, you know, I think it's been misconstrued a couple of times from a zoning perspective exactly what, you know, is being proposed here. It's not three and a half acres that's being rezoned. That seems to have been lost at some point. It's only about one and a half acres. Large majority of this property has already been rezoned, and we can go build, or anybody can go build, a project about two-thirds the size, 100-plus units on that piece. So I think incorporating the rest of this here by rezoning this makes a lot of sense. Ultimately, it takes more cars off the street because the back portion that we're asking to rezone is where we're putting a lot of the parking. So it makes the project that much better. And I really hope that you guys can take the holistic view and think about what the ultimate end goal here is from, from the proposal, as opposed to just thinking about rezoning and being shortsighted from a housing perspective. You know, the evolution of this project has, has really been great. We've been working on this now for many, many months, and understanding the height limits that you guys have, we're not proposing to go against any of that. It really does take into consideration the transition of the overall, overall area, going from four stories down on Benton, all the way down, or Riverside, I should say, all the way down to two stories on the other side. So the setbacks really, you know, account for the transition, and I think that's incorporated in here. You know, and lastly, I would just, you know, let you guys know, look, we're looking to make a significant investment here. When we invest in communities, we're there for a long time. I can't tell you, we'll never sell the project, but, you know, we intend to be in these projects for a very, very long time. We've only sold two of the 10 buildings that we have, that we've built. So I really hope you guys will allow us the opportunity to make the investment here and create significant amounts of jobs, both construction jobs for the next couple of years, and then also the permanent jobs that will be created both onsite and offsite as a result. So, thank you very much.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Thank you for coming and sharing with council. So you mentioned that as far as the affordable, I think I heard you say that what you're going to be creating might be more affordable? Did I hear that correctly?
So, to clarify that, so what I, what I said was, by adding housing stock to the area, our numbers, we think, were about doubling the housing stock in that small section over there. We ultimately should, should make other, other houses more affordable for, for others. As rent, as the, kids stop renting in some of those houses, they can then be sold and people can then move into them.
When you talked about not displacing the current residents, which, I'm just, you presented this, so I'm just going to go with it. Do you know what the current market rate rents are there?
I believe they're in the $600 a month range.
And is that per person?
Yes.
And are you proposing that you'll be around there or greater?
Our pro forma right now has about $700 per person, but figured we're three years out, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We're not trying to compete, you know, from a student housing perspective, we understand that there's, there's two different markets, there's multiple different markets here, right? You have the high-rise developments that are going on, you know, further today, in the downtown area. We're not, we're not trying to compete with those, right? This is a totally different area. We're trying to deliver a different living experience for everybody, definitely on the more affordable side compared to some of those projects. We're not, we're not competing with them.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm going to open it up for anyone from the public that would like to come and speak on this topic. And we ask that you either place a sticker in the basket that might or might not be there, or write your name on, on the sign-in list, and you'll be given up to three minutes for comments. Welcome at this time, anyone that want to speak. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Ginny Rue, and I live at 302 West Benton Street. And as you can imagine, this development impacts me greatly. And the first thing I want to say is that transitioning into the neighborhood, he, he said it's going down to two levels. It's not. It's going down to three levels. For transitioning from the four-level building that's already there by Riverside Drive down to three buildings, or three levels in the building, and then to homes, that doesn't seem like much of a transition to me. I feel like it's going to destroy our neighborhood. When you talk about 189 units that are going in, I don't think it really matters whether there are three buildings or one building. It's still 189 units. It's still going to impact us dramatically. I think the traffic is just going to be a nightmare. I really do. I think especially if you do put a stoplight in there, it's just going to be terrible. There's less than a block between the Orchard-Benton Street intersection and the Riverside-Drive-Benton Street intersection. And even if they coordinate the lights so that they're green at the same time, you're always going to have people coming southbound on Riverside Drive who turn right on red. They're going to back up against a red light there. And then you've got the traffic from the south coming around on an arrow to a red light. And then when it turns green, there's going to be, all this traffic already backed up. And I think the traffic back across Riverside Drive is going to be phenomenal during rush hour. I think it's just a nightmare. It's going to increase traffic on Benton, Orchard, Miller, and Hudson. I talked to the fire chief, Scott Lyon, yesterday, and he said that there hasn't been any decision made about whether it's going to be safe for the fire trucks. He said it's still in the rezoning segment of it, but he said anything that, that goes against fire code or impedes anything with the fire trucks, of course, he wouldn't approve it. And he said he can't say that until they go beyond the level that it's at now, beyond the conceptualizing level. I think it's going to strongly negatively impact our modest neighborhood. We have medium to low-income houses that are dear to us, and we don't want to see a big development project.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? And if you're wanting to address, feel free to just line up in the middle. Can I see a show of hands of who all wants to address this topic? Okay, yep. And you can feel free to line up whenever you are ready. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Dietz. I live at 171 Prairie Hill Lane, right off of Miller. I'm here to express my disapproval of the presented plan to build three, three-story units north of Benton Street and west of, and that would be east of Miller Avenue, south of the railroad tracks. I'm here to present a pictometry image of the site. I'm here to present a pictometry image of the site that also includes Prairie Hill. And so, this is from Johnson County plans. The Benton Street is a critical road used by emergency vehicles to reach the university hospital. Two Saturdays ago, from Riverside Drive, I saw 13 westbound cars proceed up the hill, leaving little access for additional traffic. The proposed development on three and a half acres is designed to have 189 units and 183 parking spaces. The nearby Prairie Hill Homeowners Association, with a built-out area of about three and a half acres, supports about 37 units. So from observations I have made of traffic on Benton Street and Miller, the roads would not be able to accommodate well the car traffic associated with the proposed development. Currently, Miller Street allows parking, and often cars traveling in opposing directions need to slow way down to proceed without an accident. I think it's a bad, bad plan. Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Lisa Wallach. I live at 534 Olive Street. This development probably won't impact me personally all that much. I'm not sure about whatever you have planned for the corner of Myrtle and Riverside Drive, because that's been torn down and just sitting empty. But it seems to me there's a glut of housing in this community. Seems there is a lot of empty homes and apartments, and all these apartment buildings that have gone up with retail space that sits empty for years, I don't see how that's good for a community. If no one can afford to rent out the space, it's not doing anybody any good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Fell, and I reside in, on Douglas Street, 434 Douglas Street, in the Douglas Street on Douglas Court area. And I'm here to express my deep concerns over this proposed construction. When I first started putting my concerns in writing, I came up with five questions that I think are significant for the council, not only to have answers, but to have their own answers to. One is, has the council done a supply and demand evaluation to determine the need for additional 189 units? Second, has the council taken into consideration the fact that the university has adopted a virtual learning society, allowing students to take portions or entire classes remotely? And therefore, that will impact the need for additional student housing in Iowa City. Has the council done a traffic impact study to include the potential increase of not only vehicle, but foot traffic in the area? This study should also include the impact of placing the signal at Orchard and Benton, which in my humble opinion is insane. Not only will it impede the traffic, but in my opinion, is going to promote a hazardous situation. And has the, has the council done an impact on the restriction, or I'm sorry, has the council looked at the restrictions on the variances to the construction, quote, "concept"? Is there any limit to the changes that developer can make to decide once the construction begins? Again, as I began this process of putting my thoughts to paper, what I really want to impress upon the council is disruption and destabilization of the, that this proposal is going to have on our hamlets. We have these little tiny hamlets that are on this area. And those of us who live in these small hamlets are used to having impacts of the football traffic in the area. We're used to having our streets being the last ones that are plowed, not very well. We're used to the fact that our leaves don't necessarily get picked up because we have strange cars parked in the street and the city won't, won't pick them up that those cars are there. But I think what is most concerning to me is that these are little hamlets, these are little neighborhoods, and we know each other, and we're stable. If we import, this is going to destabilize these communities. And it's going to, not only will it not complement what these current little hamlets are meant to be, but it's not going to enhance them either. And although I can appreciate what has been said, I can also say, it's really not good for those little hamlets. And that's what we need to protect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome.
Okay. My name is Joanne Whitmore. I live on Douglas Street as well, with my partner. Previously to living on Douglas Street, a number of years ago, we lived at the end of Hollywood Boulevard. And as you all know, there's a huge student housing complex there that was a renovation of a previous apartment complex. At the time this was being done, we looked at the plans and we were led to believe that there would be plenty of parking at this new location. And one of the stipulations was that the building that was going to be added right next door to our property would have a parking garage in it. And somehow, that mysteriously disappeared from the plan while the building was being constructed, so resulting in a three-story building with balconies on the back looking right into our backyard and our bedrooms. And no parking. And they charge for parking. So the first thing that the young people do is look for parking that's free, all up and down the entire length of Hollywood Boulevard, resulting in frequent calls to get cars towed from blocking our driveway. There's no visitor parking there at all. Sounds like the same situation for this proposal. So this is my main concern. Please don't make our sweet little neighborhood into a parking lot. As other people have mentioned, there will be not just parking, but storage of vehicles, because people maybe don't want to drive their cars back and forth to class, but maybe they want to go home on the weekend, all kinds of things like that. I think the other thing to, that really concerns us is the density. I don't think that 189 units with one to three bedrooms per unit results in at least two students per room. And that's 728 cars for 283 parking spaces. Just doesn't make sense. The other comment about students not being eight to five is another thing that we actually are objecting to, because it's 24/7 coming and going with this level of traffic and parking congestion and extra vehicles. So I just urge you to take a big step back and look, look hard at this kind of development in these sweet little neighborhoods that so many people in Iowa City move here for and love to live in. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome.
My name's Keen Zymet from Iowa City. And to speak on student housing, we have been experiencing unaffordable housing costs for years. To speak on the idea outlined earlier that increased housing costs can be lowered or maintained by increasing housing has been proven over and over to be inaccurate. The city council has always increased housing for the idea to curb rising rental prices. We have seen that the prices keep increasing. If we are to address rental prices, more action needs to be taken than just adding more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? And if I can see any hands of those that still want to address this topic. Okay, thank you. So after those, after the two that raised their hand, we'll close public comment. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I don't have a lot more to add than the other speakers have. I do object to this. I live on Benton Street. I live on the top of the hill, across from Roosevelt. And just on another matter, Roosevelt School is a sight for poors eyes right now. But I think the other thing I want to add, I had to come in late because I had to teach till now, was talking about, this is a transition area, and making such a big apartment building in a transition area just doesn't make any sense. So I'd like to add that on for my objection. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we didn't catch your name. Oh, did you write your?
I didn't say it. Mary Knudson.
Thank you.
And did you write your name on the list there? Thank you.
Well, I'm Ken Rue, and I know I've spoken a lot already, and you know-
Welcome.
-you know my feelings about the entire project. I just wanted to say a couple things. The idea that this would draw students out of the homes on Benton Street and around the area, so that that would open up affordable housing for others, to me, doesn't make sense because there's plenty of student housing all over. But the people that live in our neighborhood chose not to live in those places. They don't want to be in those kind of dorms and those kinds of living situations. They want to be in a neighborhood and be in a home. So this is not a home to move into. They want to get in with, you know, hundreds of other students, they could do that somewhere else. But they want to be in our neighborhoods, in our homes, and be friends of ours, okay? So that one, I also, it's also kind of bothered me that, that originally, this, not that many years ago, the comprehensive plan didn't include anything like that in our neighborhood. And the density or the scope or whatever, but nothing in, and nothing in our neighborhood, nothing has changed. I've been there 45 years. There've been a few more places built for people to live in, some condos and stuff, but nothing about the neighborhood has deteriorated or changed. But to get this in here, then you just, it's just changed what the comprehensive plan is. Now, it fits the new comprehensive plan. It seems like, anyway, it just didn't make sense to me that it didn't fit the plan before and nothing's changed. It's been fine for decades. But now, to make it different and get some more tax money or whatever the problem is, it's, just go ahead and change the comprehensive plan. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing that, I'm just, that's the feeling I get, that maybe things don't need to change, you know? If it ain't broke, don't fix it, and that type of thing. But anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And the last speaker, we have one last, we have one last speaker. Yes, and you're a part of the development team?
I'm just speaking on, just in response to everyone.
I didn't see your hand raised. Did you raise your hand?
Mr. Mayor, he did. He did.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry about that.
My name is David Tucker. I live at, excuse me, 91 Prairie Hill Lane. And I am not speaking in favor or against this development, in part because it's largely opaque to me. It's, it's, I haven't been able to understand what the plan is. However, I would like to say something about the loss of affordable housing in this area. At the January planning and zoning meeting, three of the commissioners predicted that there would be a loss of an affordable housing, and asked how it would be replaced. And a fourth commissioner, who was in favor of this development, said, "That's up to the city." So the point I would like to make to the council is that I think it's likely there's going to be a loss, and I hope you seriously consider doing something about it. Now, why do I think there's going to be a loss? If you look at the site of this development, I count four, fourplexes, three buildings which are probably fourplexes, I believe, three three-bedroom houses and one large house, which is counted as a two-bedroom house, and another building. Some of those buildings are currently advertised for rent. The three-bedroom houses are in the neighborhood of $1,400, $1,500 a month. So I think that, though you can add up those units, just the four, fourplexes will be a substantial loss of affordable housing. And of course, this neighborhood is within walking distance of the hospital, is either within walking distance or a short bus ride to large employers like Walmart and Aldi's and other employers. So I, I think this is a neighborhood that will suffer when this goes, and as I think it is likely to go. One other point I would like to make is, according to the city assessor, the same LLC, M&amp;W LLC, owns the adjoining 623 Orchard, which is currently advertised as studio apartments, about 500 to 600 square feet, for $1,200 to $1,300 a month. And I think it's likely that that's what we'll see.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, council. Mayor Mike Welch, Welch Design and Development. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, and after listening during the work session-
I have a question. Are you representing yourself, or are you still representing Welch?
I would be representing myself as a, as a member of the development community at large in Iowa City, if that makes sense. Not speaking, you know, directly on behalf of the applicant, just speaking on behalf of development in general in Iowa City and what I've heard tonight and kind of heard overall, just some points I would like to make in that regard, if that's okay.
I think it treads, treads some concerning waters, but if you want, if you're claiming that that's, you're not speaking as the developer, because I've already allowed that opportunity-
Sure.
-then you must stay within that realm.
Yep, I understand that. Thank you. The things I'd like to ask council to consider with this and other projects, I've kind of seen it on projects I've been involved in and just in general, is I do think during rezoning, it's very easy to kind of lose sight of, of the question before us, and we'll start talking about maybe impacts or things that need to be done. Will the project change from what you're seeing tonight? Or will, will it actually increase rents or decrease rents? And some of those are questions that, that I know I personally can't answer, because I think we don't know. I think when it comes to the argument of increased housing stock versus rents, I think in general, you, we do see that, and there's, there's information out there that shows that. If we're not seeing it specifically here in Iowa City, I think it's because demand is keeping pace with that supply. We haven't gotten to the point where we're building more than we actually have demand for. I think when we, when we hear staff make a recommendation for a rezoning, I think it gets lost that that's, that's a staff of professionals who know, who are experts in their area, particularly when it comes to traffic. We hear, we'll hear the public or other people question if that'll actually happen, or if we can actually do those things, and lose sight of the fact that, that the professionals on city staff who deal with traffic are telling us that, yes, we can do that, and we can accommodate those things. And oftentimes, we don't, you know, in general, we, as public, we may not, may not believe that'll happen or be something we can do. I think as I look at, at this development too, it's a code, it'll be required to comply with the zoning code, right? So, as we talked about previously, those setbacks, those step backs, those buffers that are in the Riverfront Crossings Orchard District code, no matter what happens, that will be, this developer and any other developer will have to comply with those items. And kind of lastly, again, with this project and this rezoning request, those two south properties directly on Orchard and Benton are already rezoned to Riverfront Crossings Orchard District. So as of today, any developer can come in with a plan that puts a three-story building with the appropriate step backs on those properties. So I am sympathetic to the neighbors' concerns about the change in the neighborhood, but I would like to point out that in 2019, when that rezoning was approved- I would like to point out that in 2019, when that rezoning was approved, and previously when the comp plan was adjusted, that kind of set the path that we're on tonight of what can be built there. And that can already be built there today. So, I think that's just important to keep kind of that holistic picture in mind. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So, I've closed public come. I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I get a motion to give first consideration?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to have a motion to accept the correspondence that was offered?
Yes, please. All right. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, second by Alter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And then, can I get a motion to give first consideration? I don't think I was able to get through that.
I don't think you got it yet.
So moved, Bergus.
Second, Harmsen.
Moved by Bergus, second by Harmsen. And I understand that we have some petitions that I'm going to ask our city attorney to discuss with the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've received word from staff that a valid and sufficient petition has been offered and verified. As a result, the city code, a vote to approve this rezoning would now require six votes in the affirmative. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the city attorney? And because I know we have a very skilled new counselor, but we would have, in order for this to pass, it would have to be a supermajority, and that would mean six yes votes in order for it to pass. And if there are five yes votes and two no votes, it will not pass. All right, council discussion.
I have one clarifying question, because we've had, in discussion of this, the yes vote is to go along with P&amp;Z or to, no?
To rezon-
P&amp;Z is done. To rezon, is a yes, is a, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just needed that because we were in a different state when it was P&amp;Z.
Right. It is confusing with a negative recommendation for rezoning.
Well, I'll start then, I guess. This proposal for rezoning and potential development raises many concerns for me, the most disturbing of which is the question of safety at that intersection. West Benton Street is a major thoroughfare for myself and many other community members. If any of my fellow council members or members of the public are not familiar with driving on this street, I would encourage you to do so before you make any sort of decisive vote on this. For this to be approved, staff is recommending signalization at the Orchard Street, Orchard Court, West Benton intersection. And with all due respects to staff, this is not a wise decision. This intersection is barely one block from the major signalized intersection of Benton and Riverside Drive. Crossing Riverside Drive from East Benton to West Benton, there are two lanes that head west on Benton, one of which ends abruptly at the intersection with Orchard Street, and is meant as a turning lane for drivers to head south on Orchard Street rather than continuing on Benton. But every day, every day, seriously, every day, I see drivers who all of a sudden realize that they're in the turn lane, and they quickly want to change lanes in order to go west on Benton, West Benton. And this situation can and probably has led to accidents. I hadn't asked for any sort of an accident report, but I probably should have, because I'm sure there have been, because it's very dangerous. And nobody signals that they're going to change lanes. They just all of a sudden do. And to put signalization at that intersection would only lead to more confusion to drivers who have just seconds before gone through a major intersection with signals. This will be perpetuated if the increased density is permitted, which would lead to even more traffic at this intersection. Allowing a development with increased density in this area compromises the character of this well-established Miller Orchard neighborhood. With its mix of smaller multifamily units, single-family homes, and some fairly new, attractive duplex, fourplexes, and close proximity to many amenities, it reminds me of what we've been talking about for a long time as a missing middle-type neighborhood. My understanding of a transition zone is one that moves smoothly from the larger-scale mixed-use corridor to adjacent family, single-family homes, and should be scaled appropriately. I do not see that smooth transition in this plan, and therefore do not support this rezoning.
I too am going to support P&amp;Z's recommendation of denying the application. There are a lot of issues we've talked about on this project, having to do with affordable housing, traffic, a whole range of things. They're all very important. My focus has been on the question of the comprehensive plan. And in the master plan for the Orchard District, it talks about creating a transition between larger-scale mixed-use and commercial buildings along Riverside Drive to single-family. And the means by doing that is, one of the other goals, encourage development that is complementary in mass and scale to the adjacent single-family neighborhood. So, the idea was really, you know, to use Counselor Taylor's term, create a smooth transition to try to go from the development along Riverside Drive through this transition zone, which would be a transition in mass and scale between that higher-density and larger-scale development to the west, to the east, sorry, and the single-family neighborhood to the west. So, when we're talking about mass, mass is a volume. Mass is not simply a matter of height. It's a question of volume. And so, the, you know, if we look at this proposal in terms of mass, it's, we're looking at three buildings which have very large footprints. They may be three stories in height, but they're quite large relative to the single-family neighborhood. In fact, in some ways, they replicate the mass of the buildings to the east, which is that higher intensity that we're trying to transition down from. So, the, you know, the proposal in terms of mass and in terms of scale, which is the other reference, and scale refers to a building's size relative to another building's size, or the size of one building's elements relative to another building's elements. And again, if I, when I look at the proposal, the buildings arguably are more complementary to the higher-density development to the east. So, the whole notion of this transition zone really favoring or promoting the idea that it needs to be complementary with the Miller Orchard neighborhood isn't taking place. What we're seeing is development that's more consistent with the character of the development along Riverside Drive. So, as I said, I will be not supporting this proposal. I support development for this area, but it just seems to me that we're not accomplishing the goals of this, of the Orchard comprehensive plan.
So, there've been a host of incredibly thoughtful narratives, comments, observations and concerns, chief among them, safety, density, affordable housing. And I believe wholeheartedly that all of these things must be addressed in a larger realm, but especially as far as affordable housing goes, they have met what the requirements are. And so, I struggle with this very much. But I, and this is a conversation that we need to have, and it may well be that we need to get this on a working agenda, and we really need to hash this out about what do we do with fee and lieu versus affordable housing and making developers actually create some affordable housing. But at present, that's not what is required. They have met the requirements. They also went from a large building, one large building that I think absolutely, the neighborhood was absolutely right to say, "This will not do." P&amp;Z was right to say, "This will not do." They took feedback, and they came back. Is it larger than what is anticipated or what was hoped for? Absolutely. And I also don't want to downgrade or dismiss the very real concerns about your neighborhood. But I would like to offer a little bit of a spin that's different that I have not heard and that has increasingly troubled me a little bit in the way that collectively, student housing has been characterized. On the west side of campus, this former graduate student lived over there. Most of the student housing that is on the west side is Seville Apartments, Carriage Hill, and I'm forgetting the last one, all on Benton. How old are they? These are not apartments in which young, underpaid professionals, some of whom have families, and many of whom are choosing to be on the west side because of the medical facilities and because of the law office, or the proximity to EPB where I taught, this is also student housing. So, I think that there is a definite fear, perhaps, of the stereotypical student, but I think that in fact, the fact that this is a quieter area would actually attract a number of students who you would be proud to call neighbors. Or not. But what's before us is, have they met the zoning requirements? And that's the really hard part, because there is so much at stake for the neighborhood, and honestly, for what we want to do with moving forward as a city. We've been told time and again, and agreed to it time and again, if you really want to move the needle on certain things, you have to stay focused on what's in the strategic plan. We had a commitment to infill that was, had density. This is that. And in fact, I drove around there this morning, and several times in fact, and the height of the buildings can't go any higher than three. It is further down. In looking at the way that the actual requirements of having setbacks, of trees, of pedestrian, these are things that I actually do believe are transitional. Obviously, I have colleagues who believe otherwise, as well as many public, many of the public. I keep going back to what is the decision that we are supposed to make, and what is before us, and they have fulfilled the requirements. And this has already been rezoned in two-thirds of this area. So, I will be supporting this, not out of a sense of a lack of compassion for understanding that change is hard, and that this is not the way that you're envisioning this. But I will say, in having listened to a lot of meetings by developers, it sounds like, in fact, over six months, there's been a lot of intense work to take the feedback from the neighbors. And so, I hope, if this passes, along with other counselors, that that continues. I would also strongly, strongly urge, hope, encourage that, rather than fee and lieu of, that you would actually make some units affordable.
So, I want to talk about a few aspects of discussion. First, the affordable housing aspect of this whole situation. I agree with the city attorney. I agree with, I believe, the rest of this body, that affordable housing is a huge priority for us and needs to be addressed, but also that this application does comply with our zoning code based on our affordable housing requirements. I don't believe that anyone should be making a judgment for this proposal based off of that solely because of that. That is just a procedural question that has been answered. Doesn't mean it's not a concern, but not something that I'm going to be urging others to vote off of. When I look to my decision on what is before us, I think I really do agree with a lot of what Counselor Thomas has said. I have major concerns with the mass of the project, the scale of the project, and the complementary nature of the project, all parts that, all things that we must consider as part of our Riverfront Crossing, our Riverfront Crossings master, pardon me, comprehensive plan. I would also like to comment to the point of transition in relation to that complementary nature. As stated prior, I do not believe that we have a legal definition for transition. The specific text within our comprehensive plan is that development should be restricted to building typologies such as cottage clusters, townhomes, live-work townhomes, and multi-dwelling buildings, like what we're pursuing, like what we're looking at today, that are designed and scaled in a manner that is complementary to the rhythm and scale of a single-family neighborhood located in the south and west. We have, as a body, the authority and prerogative, if we so choose, to determine what transition means in this context within that, those confines. It has to be one of those things, very clearly, in our plan. But it is my judgment that the multi-dwelling building that is proposed here and the subsequent rezoning that is being requested to create that does not align in mass and scale or is complementary to the surrounding single-family homes. I think another question that is important to consider when we're looking at this is the question of whether this aligns with our comprehensive plan is not one of, the affordable housing thing is not an issue. It is, it is one of what are we looking at for the proposal's comprehensive impact for the neighborhood, both the Orchard District and the surrounding neighborhoods. And I have been very much persuaded by concerns about traffic, by concerns about signalization, first responders, the fact that our fire department and our fire chief has said that there has not been any sort of decision, which is not necessarily required, but I'd like to see more collaboration there. The fact that there is one inlet and outlet, one legal inlet and outlet to this development here is something that seriously concerns me. As, let's be real, a lot of student buildings can sometimes have false alarm, fire alarms, cooking incidences. First responders are going to need to be able to easily get here during all hours of the day. Does not matter if it is a high-traffic time or peak time. I don't care. We need to be able to ensure that the residents of this area, the residents of the development are able to be safe, and I have not yet been satisfied with that regard. And that is a major concern. Yeah. In addition to that, concerns with parking overflow, this is, you know, again, in congruence with the state's requirement that we can make decisions based on this to, relating to the substantial relations, comfort, welfare, and maintenance of property values of the surrounding neighborhoods, is within our authority to say, "This is a likely thing to happen, the overflow of students parking in these adjacent neighborhoods," because it happens everywhere in Iowa City. I used to live on Summit Street, where there was a lot of, you know, these multi-residential, or multi-unit residential buildings, or multi-dwelling buildings, pardon me. And it was a constant issue. Nobody could ever find parking because people wanted to charge for parking in the apartment buildings. And again, the charging for parking is not something that I encourage anyone to vote off of. That is not something that we can procedurally say. But we know what behavior is occurring in other parts of our cities, and I think it is a fair thing to assume that similar situation would occur if this were to be approved. In addition, I don't find it particularly persuasive to say, "Oh, we're already going to have, you know, potential development for 100 units in the area that is already designated Riverfront Crossings," while 100 is very different from nearly double that. And there are already existing agreements with the plan to, pardon me, with the agreement to rezon that area that can kind of address concerns rather than wait for them to occur, as we observed, was explained to us by Chairman Hench. So, I will not be supporting this. I think in addition, we should also mention the broad members of the community that have supported us going against this. We have a lot of people from a lot of the west side in this room. And if you look at the petitions, which I have, we have landlords that have signed these petitions to prevent this and to get us to this point where we have a six-person majority threshold. I think the support for this is, support for failing this is broad. I think that we need to listen to the members of the community. I think we need to listen to the concerns that we've had placed before us. And so, I will be voting this down.
Ethan, I can offer just one point of clarification. There have been a number of legally permissible reasons mentioned for voting no and so forth, but I hadn't heard, and I wasn't privy to the conversation about the fire chief and so forth, but I want to be absolutely clear. The approval by the fire department for turnarounds and all that kind of stuff is not at the rezoning phase, and you should not consider the fact that the fire chief was not willing to sign off- not willing to sign off on anything at the rezoning stage as any kind of disapproval of this project. I just want to make sure that if anyone is to vote no, it not be on that basis. That's all.
If I could further elaborate on that, the staff would never put something in front of you that we felt there was public safety risk, even at this stage. If we felt that, we would never have this proposal come forward. The details of how the fire access will be handled, where fire hydrants will be placed, all of that takes place much further down the road.
I want to thank everyone who's provided their comments this evening, and many who also wrote to us and reached out in a variety of ways. I am focused on the strategic plan and on the comprehensive plan. And I think what Mr. Rue, what you said about living in this neighborhood for 45 years, and that it stayed the same, is actually a reason that I'd be inclined to support this project. There's been significant redevelopment along Riverside Drive, very, very close by, redevelopment of that whole commercial area immediately south of Douglas. Thank you for the comments from the person who lived on the end of Hollywood Boulevard. I live on the end of California. But my experience is quite different, in fact. And I believe that those hamlets that were spoken of, the neighborhood character that is spoken of, will not be destroyed if a few extra cars park on the street. I know that from my own experience and living in the same place for 20 years when a development happened about probably 300, 300 to 400 feet from my house, that went from 152 units to 352, 152 occupied units to 352 units and 900 bedrooms with no buffer. So I really don't, I understand the fear. I understand the concern of change in the neighborhood. But we have committed to density. We believe that's a good thing. We have committed to walkability. We believe that that's a good thing. We have committed to areas being accessible for all different kinds of people. And if we have concerns about the traffic and the parking, then we need to move faster and harder on our transportation systems and our transit system and alternative means for people to get around this community, because there will be growth. There will continue to be growth. And while it may stink to have these cars here, there will absolutely be an increase in traffic if this were to pass. Those cars are going to be somewhere, and it doesn't make it worse that they're closer in. The fact that there's density closer into the city center increases the likelihood that people will be walking, increases the likelihood that people will be taking campus or Iowa City Transit. So I'm just a little, honestly, kind of dumbfounded when we talk about these principles of density and infill. The city infrastructure is here. This is not a place where we need to install new water, sewer, or wastewater. And all of the road reconstruction and the signalization, those costs are borne by the developer in the project as it's constructed. So I just feel like it doesn't, it's not consistent with what we've committed to for the community as a whole if we don't allow a project like this to go forward. I do see the transition. I've seen the concept drawing. I don't know if that's how it would turn out or not, and honestly, I'm not, you know, too concerned about that because this is the rezoning stage. But we have the pedestrian access, which will ensure that it's not one giant building. We have a conditional zoning agreement, which includes what the sidewalks are going to be like, that the signalization will happen, that the pedestrian access will be there. We have safeguards for those things. And it's built into the recommendation from staff that's before us today. So I, again, I understand and appreciate so much your concerns, but I do, the folks over in Prairie Hill, I don't, I don't think you'll ever notice this. I really don't. Besides the fact that it's going to be new development replacing some structures that are honestly kind of rundown, and to Mayor Protam's point, would be good to have some student housing that isn't 40 years old over there. So I would urge my colleagues, those who've indicated that they won't support this, to reconsider, because I really believe that our comprehensive plan calls for this, our strategic plan calls for this, and our community needs more housing.
Would you like to go first, Mr. Mayor?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter either.
All right, I'll go. Yeah, that's all right. This is, I mean, this is a hard decision to make because we have heard from staff, the public, fellow councilors, you know, who have spoken so far. There's been some for it, some against it. As I, and I don't want to go into everything because I think a lot of, a lot of the points have, some of the points have probably reflected, well, the points have shared the concerns that have been shared by the, you know, by those that don't support it when it comes down to transportation, or the issues are, I hear the concerns. And then I hear, you know, the light, the traffic light that's going to be placed and how that will help with that situation, some of the safety concerns there. I think all of my colleagues up here, knowing my comments earlier today about affordable housing, I don't know how people that I know can afford to live here. But that is not what we're, you know, the problem is, is this isn't what we're talking about. And, and I think, you know, when we look at our strategic plan, housing is, I mean, I think everything that you talked about is exactly right, what we talked about, Counselor Burgess, as far as some of the things that we want to do within our strategic plan. Some of the things that we're not, one of the things that I know about our strategic plan is that there is still work to be done when it comes down to even the work session that we just talked about, we put it in there, where we're going to talk about zoning, we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan, we're going to, you know, because we have to talk about that, we're going to have to talk about affordable housing and the fee in lieu of. And so while those are very concerning to me, that, that's why I wanted to know what the current market rate was, what, you know, what the rents would be. That's important. And all of this is, I mean, it seems like it's a big thing, right? There's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of things that, I think the values of this, of this community, is some of it is in here, some of it is missing when, for example, the affordable housing, which is, we heard from the students, you know, or the USG, I think they represented, the USG voices, the student government. But at the end of the day, I have to look at what we are actually talking about, and as rezoning, I do ask myself some of the other questions. And rezoning, I think they've met the, you know, the, our affordable housing criteria, which again, I think we need to definitely have that discussion. I've been on this council since 2018. We keep, you know, we have made strides. I don't want to discount some of the strides that we've made. We've been doing the form-based code, and we've made some strides. But, and I know Counselor Thomas, who just talked about the work session agenda, you know, really talking about how do we deal with the infills, some of those form-based codes, dealing with the infills, and kind of just fast pacing. What do, what do this community want when it comes down to affordable housing, walkable, walkability, parks, all that good stuff? But for this one today, I'm going to be in support of it only because it, I can't hold this developer to what the work of this city council, which I love every one of you, and I know that we are working hard to live up, you know, to the expectations of this community. But when it comes down to transitional housing, I think I can, I can debate for and against, you know, the mass and the scale, or how it's interpreted. The transportation, you know, at the stoplight, I can, I hear that concern, the parking, I hear that. But at the end of the day, I think that when I really look at what we're being asked to today at this rezoning, I really do believe that these developers have, are meeting the criteria. And so I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Like my fellow councilors, I'd like to thank everybody that contributed their voice to this. One of the benefits from that for me was it really required a much, much deeper look into a lot of the different facets that were raised. Some of the things about this project, to echo some earlier comments, that I actually do appreciate, and we have made a commitment to density and location and walkability and access to public transportation lines, a lot of those boxes get checked for me. The affordable housing fee in lieu, I mean, that's, the fee in lieu has actually made some, some changes in our communities, has done some positive work. So that checks that box. My big concern probably, and was really looking at that traffic issue. And so that was one of the things that I wanted to learn more about, because I think that would have had probably the biggest ripple effect. And seeing as what could already be developed there and the differences, I find that I'm probably a little bit more confident that moving forward won't have the extreme negative impact, I think, that's feared. And part of the reason I say that, and actually Counselor Taylor is absolutely right, I've driven through that intersection many times, if we change that intersection, we're not losing some treasure of a well, well-spot of good traffic flow. And so then it really becomes a question of, with the opportunity to rearrange and adjust that intersection and have that signaledized and have the lanes do whatever, really a chance for the people, our engineers, to work with the developer and hopefully maybe even improve that area as opposed to making it, making it worse with a chance that it might just end up being a wash. But that doesn't rise, my concerns there no longer rise to the point where I would oppose this project. And again, I'm not going to rehash all the different things. My fellow councilors have made a lot of great points, so, so I will be supporting this tonight for that reason.
Mayor, could I make just a couple clarifying points as well, based on our discussion here? I think it's important to know that this, this is implementing our form-based code, right? We have a Riverfront Crossings form-based code, and this is one of the few opportunities to actually apply that, right? To apply a form-based code to infill, because we don't have form-based code. We have it in the South District, and we have it in this area. And so I think it's important to remember that when it comes to the actual design of the buildings and how everything will be implemented, that they have to meet very stringent standards of that code that is different than what you see in a lot of other parts of town. And I'm not, I'm not so sure, I don't know if anyone is voting based on the affordable housing piece or not, but I think it's really important to remember something as far as the bigger picture about housing affordability. And that is, we know from experts that with new construction, it will not be affordable. Affordable housing is subsidized. Affordable housing can be subsidized through federal money, it can be subsidized through local money, but we are never going to have, you know, sort of the market just create affordable housing. And the local money that we use to help create affordable housing in our community is based in part on the revenue that we receive from investment in the community. And if we forestall development and redevelopment because it's change, it's addition, it's growth, we will not be able to meet those larger affordable housing needs because we, we won't be, the pot won't ever get bigger, and we won't be able to provide those subsidies that we know we have to provide in order for it to work out. So as much as I would love for capitalism to change and the forces to be different, I think it's a fact that new construction is not going to yield, you know, $400 a month rents. It's just not, not something that's possible. And so I hope that we keep that in mind if we turn down something that would be a significant investment in, in new housing units in our community.
I just, just wanted to make, after listening to some of the comments from my fellow councilors, I wanted to reference again, the, you know, the development program for the Orchard District. I am not opposed to development. In fact, when I saw the development program, I thought that's, that's missing middle. That's, that's what I've been advocating for, for years. Cottage homes, row houses, townhouses, live-work townhouses, and two-to-three-story multi-dwelling buildings with the third-floor step-back. There are ways one can employ those building types in a manner which would be complementary in mass and scale to the surrounding neighborhood. So development can move forward, we can have that sense of continuity and flow, we do not have a concentrated area of very high density, and then the single-family homes. We have something which actually offers some diversity in housing type. That's the whole idea behind missing middle, is developing in a way which is complementary to what we all love about neighborhood scale, but increasing density than what we're typically, we associate with those neighborhoods, which is primarily single-family homes. There is a strategy that we have been advocating for, and actually you can see it in the Roret and South District, for achieving higher densities while not losing that sense of neighborhood house scale. And that's what I envisioned happening, and it didn't happen. And so that's why I'm not supportive of it.
I think we just also have to remember, none, no additional density in that northern part can occur without rezoning, regardless of the design. That's what we're, that's what we're talking about tonight. So the, like, a cottage court, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that is, that kind of scale would still require rezoning. Is that correct?
Correct. I think if, without a rezoning, you can expect to see the same level of density remain, and therefore redevelopment is highly unlikely because there's no financial incentive to redevelop if there's no density increase.
I just can't not respond to one thing that Counselor Burgess has said, only because affordable housing is something that this community has, we need. I'm not fully convinced that a developer could not have 10% of their units with affordable rates, even this project at this scale. I, I don't want developers to walk away thinking that, you know, this council just believes that new construction just has to be at market rate. There are ways for developers to build and to have some portion of their rents affordable. Now, that is a personal choice that they would have to make, whether they be losing money or not making as much money, absolutely, but I don't want to just let that comment go without me responding.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I completely, you know, you and I have talked about that a lot, about, you know, how from our perspective, actually having those units at that 10% rate, actually having them be affordable units is desirable. But as you had mentioned even, you know, earlier, and I know that you are supporting this project, that's not even the issue before us right now, right? So just to, to sort of reiterate that, that that is something that is, the rezoning doesn't commit you to either fee in lieu of or to the 10%. And so, again, you know, yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Right.
I've heard my fellow councilmembers continually talking about what council has looked for in housing over the last few years, you know, affordability, the walkability, infill development, those kinds of things. But the other thing that has been pounded into us is stabilization of the neighborhoods, and of which this neighborhood, just a few blocks away, our council, our city, had spent considerable amount of money in purchasing homes for the university program to stabilize those neighborhoods. those neighborhoods, which had currently been kind of run down by absent landlords, students that didn't take care of the property, where now these are owned, these are home-owned, owned by persons, which helped to stabilize that area. And I think it, it kind of defeats that purpose if, if we don't continue to, to keep this as a stable hamlet, as it was described neighborhood.
Yeah, I just, I go from experience and I, there are so many people who are students who live on the west side and they're graduate students, they're 25 and up. This is not like looking for this, when I moved here in the 1990s, the worst place to live, or the best place, depending on who you were, was on South Dodge Street as, you know, and South Johnson. That was like party central. I don't think that we're looking at a student population who wants to move to a place where there is a small hamlet environment that is not larger, that actually is on the west side of campus. It is a different student population. These are law students, they are med students, they are older students. These are people who may be working other jobs, you know? I cannot help but say that there is a lot of diversity in student population as there is in the community as well. And they are part of the community, and frankly, grad students deserve to live in some decent places, too.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could just offer, it, it appears the council's going to, to vote this down, at least with the supermajority requirement, at some point, if not tonight, sometime. I think staff would appreciate some direction so that we can guide future development in this area. The comp plan does call for redevelopment, and we have an adopted zoning code that guides that redevelopment. If it's clear that there's not a, a support for that, or if you don't think the regulations are appropriately addressing what that redevelopment looks like, then, then we need to get in and, and change the code. Because we have a set of rules right now that someone is saying, I'm willing to, to play ball by those rules. I'm, I'm just going to afraid that we're going to be left in a little bit of limbo here. And, and we can adopt the code, we can change the code to address your concerns, but that needs to happen pretty quick.
Roll call, please.
Thomas?
No.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes. I'm, no, I'm sorry, motion fails, four to three.
All right, we are moving on to item number 10B. This is rezoning, Western Home GPD of Iowa City.
Do we, do we have a motion to accept correspondence on that last? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. What I've been trying to do is actually do the, except correspondents at the moment.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot that one.
Step in the packet, laid handout.
Got it.
Oh, great. Got it, got it, got it. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I'll continue to recuse on the next slide.
Great. All right. All right, we're going to move on to item number 10B, which is rezoning Western Home GPD of Iowa City. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 31.2 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Road and north of Gathering Place Lane from interim development single-family residential and low-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay to medium-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay. And this is second consideration, and the applicant is requesting expedited action. And I also want to make note that City Attorney Gores is removing himself because of conflict of interest. Could I get a, yes, all right?
Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor?
Second.
Seconded by Harmson. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Okay. Welcome.
My foot fell asleep. Steve Long with Slida Partners, representing Western Home Independent Living Services. And I just want to let you know that, I mean, we talked last week, or two weeks ago, Chris Hansen was here, he's not able to be here this evening, but I will be here representing Western Home. And we also have Sanjay with ACR Architecture and Mike with Welch Development Design, if you have any further questions.
Great. Any questions by council? All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please. Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn? Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
T?
Yes.
Thomas? Yes. Motion passes seven to zero.
Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, done.
Second, Taylor.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
T?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Burgess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we are on to item number 11, which is 11A, J Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Resolution and proven project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the J Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome.
Joe Alter from Engineering, presenting on this project. So this is located, it's a little touchy, located in, close to Southeast Junior High, off of, between First and Third on J Street. So on the west side of First Avenue, it's J Street, on the east side, it's Bradford. So you can kind of see where the neighborhood where we're located at. This is a utility replacement project. It's not a street reconstruction. We're replacing some defective and faulty sanitary sewer between Second and Third Avenues. At the same time, we are fixing some issues with some of the services in the right-of-way as well. So we'll be restoring all those services, but we're fixing the orientation of some of those services and where they go into the, the new sewer versus the existing sewer had a point that is basically completely flat. And so it wasn't really draining, and some of the services were going into that section. So we're eliminating that and fixing some of the drainage issues with the sewer. We're taking the opportunity to infill sidewalk between First and Third on the north side of J. We'll be redoing the curb ramps in this project. We're also taking the opportunity to adjust some water valving. We're in the area, and we'll get better control about adjusting some of the locations and how the, the valving for the water mains is done, so we're going to do that as well. Obviously, once we're done with those constructions, we'll be restoring the street, the driveway pavement, there'll be the restoration of the parkway. All the work is being done inside of the right-of-way, we're not doing anything on private property. And to accommodate, because there are some denser housing here, to accommodate getting people in and out of their places of residence, we're breaking this up into six phases. So for a relatively small project, this is going to have a lot of phasing, and the reason we're doing that and forcing the contractor to go a little slower is to get everybody in and out of their properties on, on, on a daily basis. We are supporting our strategic objective of mobility. So the strategic plan talks about designing and maintaining complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users and to grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations. So this sidewalk infill, which is shown in the green, is meeting those mobility requirements that connectivity to the school, the park, the recreation center, and many businesses all within a half-mile of this project corridor. So this is a really key infill section connecting this neighborhood to the First Avenue corridor and, and that greater part of the city. The estimated costs are $550,000 for this project. It's being funded by the wastewater fund. We are looking to proceed forward with bidding this month and award at March 7th. The start date is scheduled to coincide close to the end of the school year, because we are so close to the school. With a substantial completion date, that means when the public can reuse the corridor before the fall school semester starts. And then there's always some things that need to be cleaned up, so we got that 30-day period in there to, between the substantial and final completion. It was designed by Water Smith Engineering out of Muscatine, who's done a lot of recent design for us, so I'd like to thank Brad Roth and his team for that. Any questions for me?
Just a comment, Joe. I really appreciate the integration of the strategic plan into your presentation. Really good. Thank you.
Just again, a comment, since this is over in my district and, and my, my neighborhood, glad to see, you know, infrastructure improvements, but really appreciate the attention to letting residents get in and out, even though that makes the project a little more spread out or whatever. But especially the sidewalk infill, that's, you know, both of my kids went to that junior high, I'm very familiar with the amount of foot traffic that flows in and out of that school, and especially now with ICCSD changing its junior high to a middle school model, it's going to have a 50% increase in students, roughly. Since now there'll be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, will soon be, if they're not already, going to that building. And so, so good timing on that, and looking forward to having students be safer as they move through that, that area going to school.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Yes, so come forth. Seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Council discussion.
I just want to burn into our memories that we are in favor of this sidewalk infill. So if the neighbors come out and say, we don't want our front yards torn up for the sidewalk infill, we just had a public hearing, and we all say how great this is, okay? And I'm going to remind us of that if come later at some point.
I love sidewalks, so no reminder necessary.
Okay, well, you know, it was before your time, Sean, but we've, we've had issues before, so. That's my only comment, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 11B, Gilbert Street Bridge Replacement. Resolution and proven project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Gilbert Street Replacement Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome.
My name is Melissa Klow. I'm here with the Engineering Division to talk about the Gilbert Street Bridge Replacement Project tonight. Quick background, the existing bridge was constructed in 1972. During the 2021 bridge inspection, it is noted that there was cracking and spalling in the deck and superstructure, and so replacement was recommended. It no longer meets the current safety requirements, it lacks the safety barriers between vehicles and pedestrians. And bank slump and erosion in the channel was also identified at that time. We will be constructing a new four-lane continuous concrete slab bridge in the place of the existing one. It will include six-foot sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, and we'll be using a barrier rail similar to what you see on Rochester Avenue and the Dodge Street Bridge with the aesthetic, aesthetic handrail. The streambank stabilization on the north and south side of the bridge, sorry, on the east and west side of the bridge, will be fabric-formed concrete, reventment, as well as Class E riprap. Other improvements that you will see are the upsizing of the storm sewer between the Creek and Court Street during heavy rainstorms, ponding depths have topped the curb in this location. Water main north of the bridge will also be improved to remove it from the bridge footprint to facilitate future improvements. And then we will also be accommodating parking and access for local businesses during This is a quick map of the traffic control. We have this broken up into a number of phases. The first phase will be preparation for the road closure. We will need a complete closure for Gilbert Street. And we will be constructing a temporary driveway at the parking lot on the north side of the bridge to access Maiden Lane, so that traffic can still get down Gilbert, access the businesses, and then get out onto Maiden Lane. The second and third phases will be construction of the storm sewer as well as of the bridge. The storm sewer will be a condensed phase, and after that, we'll allow parking and also truck parking for deliveries to the same businesses. And then Phase Four will be, once the road is open, we'll complete the storm sewer at the Court Street intersection. The estimated construction cost is $2.9 million, and the city has been awarded funds from the Iowa DOT City Bridge Program for reimbursement of 80% of eligible project costs up to $1 million. Project timeline will include the bid letting that will occur through the DOT on March 21st. We plan to award at the city council meeting on April 4th, and construction will start shortly after April 24th. Final completion is planned for early October of this fall. We are requiring a six-day work week, and we have incentive disincentive set up to encourage the contractor to get done as soon as possible. So with that, any questions?
Melissa, I have a question about the funding. The DOT award, is that competitive? Is that something that we had to apply for, or is that?
It's, when we have bridges that are recommended for replacement, we apply to the DOT for funding, and they will determine where those funds go that are available, so.
Thank you. And will the road be closing, but like at April, like as soon as construction begins, the road's going to be closed?
So we have a week to two weeks of preparation to provide that driveway and the pull-through to Maiden Lane, and then the road will be closing.
Okay. Until October?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please come forth. Seeing no one in public or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Harmson, seconded by Alter. Council discussion.
One, actually, may I have shared, don't, while you're up at the podium, I'm sorry, but in terms of, you know, the timeline and speed of this project is going to be really important because of the nature of this thoroughfare. Is this project, this might be a crystal ball thing, but is there any sense that some of the supply chain issues that have bedeviled us on projects all last summer and the summer before that, that are easing maybe? Or is that being built into what we're guarantee, having the contractors tell us about their ability to get hold of supplies, or?
Well, we have seen that improving recently. One of my other projects, Water Main, wasn't supposed to be delivered for a year, and it showed up at the contractor's yard nine months before they said they'd get it. So we're hoping that we see that. This timeline is built into the contract, so the contractor will know kind of what they're signing up for, so.
Thank you. Any other comments by counselors?
Just for staff, I think we've learned some good lessons last year about how we communicate about road closures and that kind of thing. So I would imagine that we're going to be really aggressive in letting people know that one of our main thoroughfares will be closed for a number of months. And if the schedule changes, we'll
Let them know.
Let them know as soon as possible.
And all will be happy.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
There were quite a bit of negotiations with some of those adjoining property owners from whom we had to acquire property rights, and it included signage as well, not about the, well, that some of those businesses are still
For business access, yeah.
Sure.
Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11C, sanctioned boxing event exception. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Five entitled Miscellaneous Offenses, Section Nine entitled Amateur Fighting and Boxing by adding an exception for boxing matches sanctioned by US Boxing, USA Boxing. And staff is requesting expedited action.
Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor?
Second, Thomas.
Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Dunn.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Dunn. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, Council Appointments, 12A, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. And there is one vacancy, no gender requirement, and one applicant.
I think we should appoint him.
All right, yeah. Yeah. I did appreciate that he's with a paramedic. He's a paramedic field supervisor with Jones County Ambulance, so, yeah. All right. So could I get a motion to appoint Andreas Welts?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Number 13 is Announcements of Vacancies New. 13A, Announcements of Vacancies New is the Silver Civil Service Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through April 6, 2026. And could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Did you say same?
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Item 14 is Announcement of Vacancies Previous. 14A is Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications will, must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 15 is City Council Information.
I just have one thing to share. I went to the Emma Goldman 50th Celebration, 50th Anniversary Celebration, and it was both incredibly affirming and motivating, and as a bonus, there were two lifetime awards given to Joel Volcom and Mary Masher for their long fight for reproductive rights and abortion care for women. So it was a really, really good event.
Mayor, I have kind of a somber note. I think people are aware of the massive earthquakes that occurred in Turkey and Syria. And our state Senator Janice Weiner, our former colleague, wanted to share, asked if we'd be willing to share some thoughts, and so I just attribute this to her because I can hear her voice in it, but I just wanted to share this with the community. While our focus is here in Iowa City, I want to ask you to raise your gaze and keep the people of southern Turkey and northern Syria in your thoughts and prayers. On Monday night, a massive earthquake magnitude 7.8 on the Richter scale struck near Gaziantep in southern Turkey. It was followed by numerous strong aftershocks and yesterday, a separate 7.4 magnitude earthquake in a neighboring province. It is a natural and humanitarian disaster on a scale that is hard to comprehend encompassing an area of land at least the size of the state of Iowa and cities impacting millions of people, including Aleppo and Idlib in Syria, which have already been ravaged by civil war for the last 10 years, and many other cities and towns across southern Turkey. There are millions and millions of people affected. The initial quake struck just after 4:00 AM local time when most people were in their beds. The death toll currently stands, as of 3:00 PM today, it was at 7,200, and I think estimated to be much higher than that and continues to mount. Millions are now without a safe roof over their heads, and it is winter and freezing at night. So please keep these people in your thoughts and prayers, and if you are able, consider giving to a charity of your choice that is helping, as there are many. There is great need and will be for a very long time to come. So I thank her for always thinking of our whole world community. She served for a quarter of her career in the State Department in Turkey, so it's very close to her heart. I had one other announcement. Counselor Harmson and I will be having our listening post, couldn't come up with the term, on Monday, February 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30, I believe. Yes, okay, thank you. At the East Side Recycling Center. I think this evening was a good reminder for me of how difficult and frustrating it can be to engage with the city council, and I hope that people will take advantage of the opportunity to come speak with us in that informal environment and bring any thoughts, concerns, ideas, suggestions to us there.
Just wanted to mention that Counselor Dunn and I met with some resident, mobile home park residents from here in and around Iowa City this past weekend, and continue to hear some very troubling things about the ways they're being treated by out-of-state investment firm landlords, things like rent going up dramatically while services are being cut, which has the side effect of then increasing their costs because now they have to replace those services. And so, an issue that we'll continue to keep an eye on and relay that information and work with other partners. We had one of our county board supervisors with the meeting too, and so there may be some things we can look at collaborative, collaboration with them and other entities to try and continue to look for ways we can work at the local level as we keep our fingers crossed, but not hold our breath for action on the state level to protect these valuable neighbors of ours, so.
Hearing nothing else, we'll go to item 16, Reports From City Staff, City Manager's Office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney.
Nothing for me either, thank you.
City Clerk?
Nothing, thanks.
All right. And item number 17, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Alter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good night.